I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board meeting of November 18th, 2021, to order at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Simonovic.
Here.
Attorney Zimminak.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Assistant Village Manager Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting after our 100th anniversary party. And at this point, open forum. Is there anybody here, Chief? One person that's not on... If you're here for something that's not on the agenda, now's the time, and I do have one person. It's Florence Dalton, and she's 128 South Cass. She's here to talk about code enforcement. So if you want to go up to the podium, and I think I got your name and address right, right?
Yep. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I have been here in Westmont. Thank you anyways for letting me speak tonight. I've been in my location for seven years. I own a small nail salon. After seven years in this location, I have been approached four times by village code enforcement, basically because of illegal signage as well as window lighting. Yesterday, I received a violation notice from code officer referencing multiple code violations. I have never received or been directed to a list of codes. I am looking... I am looking for help in understanding the motivation of this sudden enforcement. I have been aware of about 15 businesses besides my own that have window trim lighting and blinking signs, along with many neon marketing their business. Why is this an issue after seven years? As a small business, I am recovering day by day from COVID effects, enclosures. Like many personal care industries, we have been very hard hit by work from home orders. I need to market my business without additional financial drain. So is the solution empty storefronts, excessive vacancies? I don't know what the motivation is of this. And it's been since September now, and I've never had a problem.
And I appreciate you coming in and getting an opportunity to talk to us about it, but I'm going to... Bruce Sylvester back there, he'll meet with you now and at least get your name and information. He could follow through to find out why, because we can't, other than if we knew, we don't know what's going on. But I appreciate you coming in and letting us be aware of it. So hopefully he'll be able to help you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this point, I'll close open forum and move on to reports, my reports first. And I am going before we do anything. I'm going to call on Chief Riley. A couple things. The COVID-19 update, and unfortunately, we had a death in one of our ponds earlier in the weeks. I asked Chief Riley to give an update on both.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Village Board. I'll give the COVID update first, if I may. While COVID cases have been trending down over the last month, that has leveled off and cases are increasing in several states, including Illinois, in the last two weeks. However, the news for the last seven days is not good. U.S. cases have increased 23%. Hospitalizations are down 1%, and deaths are down 13%. In the state of Illinois, the new positivity rate is 3.5, which is up from a couple weeks ago. Cases are up 60%, hospitalizations are up 29%, and deaths essentially have stayed about zero. In DuPage County, the community transmission remains very high. The testing positivity rate is 3.3 now and only increasing. Even though hospitalizations remain low at approximately five a day, deaths remain low at approximately one a day. In DuPage County, we're currently at 114,167 cases, along with 1,480 deaths. In Westmont, we are at 2,816 cases, 92 deaths, which is no new deaths from the two-week-old report. My concern is that the increase in hospitalizations and deaths typically follow an increase in cases. These increases should be minimized by more people being vaccinated. Persons that have been vaccinated are generally well protected, but the unvaccinated still remain at a high risk. So again, as I always close it, we need to continue to do the right thing: social distancing, face coverings at all times, and washing those hands. Next, I will talk about last Sunday morning at 10:37 AM, the Westmont Police Department and Fire Department were dispatched for a car into a pond at 999 Oakmont Plaza. Police and Fire Department members arrived on the scene and did find a car fully submerged. We put rescue divers into the water. We punched out the glass windows on the passenger and driver's side and found the driver in the vehicle. He was removed from the vehicle, removed from the pond, and went into the back of an ambulance where he was pronounced deceased. The investigation is still ongoing by the Westmont Police Department and Merritt, which is Metropolitan, through basically the SWAT reenactment team, which Chief Gunther could talk more on. But at this time, the investigation is still ongoing by the police department, and I would refer any other questions, reference the investigation to Chief Gunther.
Any question for Chief? Thank you, Chief. Moving on, I mentioned before, last week, November 10th was our anniversary, our 100th anniversary celebration. It was an amazing turnout. It was all outside. We had a great event, thanks to Larry Forsberg and his committee for the Legacy Business Awards, and also the anniversary for the legacy for the businesses and the legacy for the families. And we also, we had our future mural unveiled, and the 2121 time capsule was buried in, which is now Simmski Plaza, which is directly west of Village Hall. So our time capsule's there. The park got dedicated, and will be opened at the village's 200th anniversary. There's a bunch of pictures at the village website, photo gallery on the website, and a video of the event will be finished soon. Again, I want to thank, staff did a tremendous job setting it up and organizing our birthday celebration, which concluded with fireworks. So again, I want to thank everyone who attended. It was a great night at a great event. And now I'm going to ask Larry Forsberg to the podium. He has a couple businesses with us tonight. We're unable to attend that we want to mention and celebrate.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board members. Yes, last Wednesday was a day to remember truly. And we have 25 businesses in town that have served Westmont 50 years or more. When we tally it up, the cumulative total of years of service for those businesses, it comes to a grand total of 1,611 years. So really impressive. We have a couple businesses here tonight. I'll start off by introducing John Harrelson's, Harrelson's Garage. John, we'd like to get a photo of you with the mayor presenting you with a certificate for our archives, please. The mayor's fine. And John is actually third generation, and then we have a fourth generation.
It is right behind you, Mayor.
There we go. I'll simply remind everybody that Harrelson's has served the village of Westmont since 1956. So thank you for everything that you've done for our country. We also have with us tonight the Rankins of Oakwood Electric. Rob and Becky were able to make it. Not the entire family was, and we didn't want to miss this opportunity for a presentation to the entire family. So if the Rankin family can please come up.
How fun.
How many years, Larry?
How many years now, Rob?
Since 1970.
What year did you open up the business?
Boy, oh, boy.
90 years of service to Westmont.
I remember there was a chicken farm there.
Right here, take a few pictures. I can't tell. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. You're welcome. And just again, a thank you to the mayor and to the 100th Anniversary Committee for putting together the award program. It was greatly appreciated by our business community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have one other item in regards to the 100th anniversary. We conclude our celebration with our Holidays 100th Anniversary Parade, which will be on December 4th. That's its first Saturday in December. Parade starts at 5:00 PM in Marchus South on Cass Avenue. This year, the parade will cross the tracks and head west on Quincy Street. The tree lighting will be by the Westmont Center at the corner of Cass and Quincy. Then everyone will walk over to the west Quincy Street to watch fireworks and take outdoor pictures with Santa. This year, there'll be no activities inside Westmont Center. Yes, sir?
I'd like to say one thing about Westmont. If you compare Westmont Christmas lighting with any other village, I can't see anybody that can beat Westmont when it comes to the decoration. You guys do a great, great job.
Thank you. Thank you. We enjoy it too. Yeah, it's all right. Well, thank you. And that concludes my report. Now I'll turn to Clerk Simmski.
Yeah, I just have a couple announcements. All village offices will be closed November 25th and 26th for Thanksgiving. The Westmont High School Van Booster Craft Show, December 4th, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This is the perfect way to shop local and support our high school best... boosters. I wanted... I have to say this, Mayor. You did the most amazing job of five years' work with our wonderful celebration. I'm so proud of you. You worked so hard, and you did a terrific job.
I thank you, but it was the staff who did it. All I did was stand in front of everybody and give the aours. Staff did a fabulous job, and the committee, not just staff, the committee. We had a committee for five years, and those individuals worked extremely hard to accomplish what we got. Jenny was on it, Patty, Larry, our staff, Steve, and then we had the library, the park, we had citizens. So it was a great group effort. So thank you. Trustee Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the Community Development Committee, the November Planning and Zoning Commission agenda this month will include recommendations to modify zoning regulations for public utility accessory buildings. Also, a proposed site and landscaping plan for a public utility accessory building at 200 West 63rd Street, which is AT&amp;T. Our recommendation is also to include a zoning definition for bowling alley. Also, a request for multiple use at the suburban bowling alley at 201 North Ogden, and also a request to rezone and subdivide the property at 538 65th Street to create two buildings, do buildable lots. And also, a request for variance at 319 North Lincoln to allow a driveway to be closer to the side lot line to be allowed. Items will come to the Village Board in the coming weeks. Regarding the Chamber news, business after hours, which is scheduled at their option in each of the businesses, the annual Christmas party, business hours at DJ Sports Bar is scheduled for Tuesday, December 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Johanne Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to remind everyone that our next fire Public Safety Committee meeting will be March 10th at 4:30 at the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. And then I also want to say a big thank you to the mayor, 100th Anniversary Committee, and village staff for their hard work in making the 100th anniversary a success. I also want to say thank you to the residents. The turnout was amazing, so I just want to say thank you to everyone. What a great evening. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Simonovic.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by reminding everyone that the next Police Public Safety Committee meeting will be here in this room on December 22nd at 9:00 AM. I usually update everyone about some of our hiring work, so I am happy to report that the Community Development Department has really worked to solve some of the staffing challenges they've faced in the recent months. We are pleased to welcome Julie Johnson to the Community Development Department. She joined the team on Monday as a part-time permit coordinator, and we're going to be starting interviews next month for the planner position. So looking forward to getting somebody else on the team.
Thank you. Now I'll turn it over here to Trustee Neerl.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be December 16th at 4:30 PM, right here in Village Hall. Just another friendly reminder, as you've heard before, is please keep the leaves from the storm drains. Our Public Works folks, remind everyone to help our community to not rake your leaves into the street. Westmont has a free leaf collection program during the month of November to help residents get rid of all their unwanted leaves. Also, please keep storm drains near your home free of leaves and other debris, which may cause flooding. Thank you. A quick update. If you noticed, the MFT program is finishing up this week, so a lot of new resurfacing done. We appreciate all that. And the Stormwater Project at 63rd and Richmond is completed. The new gateway sign is up, so please go and check it out. What a great project that was. Really cleaned up the area nicely. And second to last, our new Village Center is 80% complete. Depending on the weather, it should be completed by December 1st. And just to add to what everybody's already said, is thanks to the mayor and all the staff and the 100th Committee. What a party. Mayor, you know how to throw a good birthday party.
Staff knows how to do it.
So we know who to come to when someone has to celebrate a milestone party. It was a lot of fun. The residents were having a blast. All the folks that were involved with the village, you could tell they appreciated it. So thanks for putting all the effort. I know there was a lot of meetings, and geez, five years of planning into that, but it was a lot of fun. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held December 2nd at 4:30 here at Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. And then the community events, the downtown painted windows project was such a... for fall and Halloween was such a great success, that Westmont Special Events and the Creative Arts Network are collaborating again for winter and holiday paintings. Businesses can go to westmondevents.com to sign up to have their windows painted by our outstanding artists in town. Last item that I have is the Kris Kringle Pub Tour will be Saturday, December 11th. This is a costumed event, and people are encouraged to dress as their favorite holiday character, or just wear your tackiest, over-the-top holiday sweater. More information can be found at westmondevents.com. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, at the end of last week, Sister Noreen George passed away, and she had been a principal at Holy Trinity for almost 20 years, and remarkable nun that ran that school. I worked with her for a lot of those years, but what she brought to that school, at one point, there were 440 kids in the school. She knew every kid. She knew every kid's middle name. She knew what they had for breakfast. And when you walked in the school, you couldn't find a scrap of paper on the floor. But just remarkable woman. Education there was outstanding under her leadership, and she will be missed. So condolences to them. The Environmental Improvement Committee, I wanted to thank the group of EIC members that volunteered, but also, we had special volunteers from Arker School District. The Science Club came over with their adult supervision, and they helped out with the pumpkin composting. So that was another successful event, and we really thank the school for their participation with us on that event. We have free leaf pickup still in November. If you put it in a craft paper bag, you don't need to put a sticker on it. You just put it out next year with the trash on Trash Day. And then there is, again, cooking oil recycling with Downers Grove Sanitary District at the Downers Grove Sanitary location at 2710 Curtis Street in Downers Grove. See if you're going to have those turkeys again. And then Holiday Lights Recycling is also happening, and that can be dropped off at the library parking lot or the Fire Department headquarters now through the end of January. That is all. Thank you.
So thank you. But those are available now, so as I go through, and my lights all light, I could take them there and throw them in.
Take them there and dispose of them properly.
I'm finding a lot of squirrels been eating through my wiring. Moving on. Yes, yes, sir. Yes, we forgot.
One last small piece of business from the Wicked West Fest activities. We did have a Scarecrow Decorating Contest in the month of October, and we have with us today from the College of DuPage Westmont Center campus, Pete Mumford. So we'd like to present him with a certificate to recognize the great work that they did as part of the decorating contest. So we'll have you come up over here with the mayor.
No, that was just the chamber. Larry should be in the picture.
Get in there.
And again, for those who have not met Pete Mumford, he is the lead person at the Westmont Center for College of DuPage. He's also been very involved recently, starting on our Chamber of Water Directors. Anything you'd like to say about Westmont campus?
I'd just, I'd like to introduce myself and thank you all for having me here. This is quite an honor. This is a major award. Telling everybody, if anyone gets the Christmas Story reference there, with the leg lamp, it was a major award. So I've been at the College of DuPage Westmont Center for the last six years as a supervisor. I've been at the college for 20. That building actually opened up 30 years ago, almost to the day. So it's been there 30 years. For those of you who don't know, we offer a variety of credit and non-credit classes, counseling, testing. We're just a mini campus, but we're a lot better because we're in Westmont. So thank you again so much for having me.
Well, thank you for participating. Moving on, does anybody from the board want anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read the consent agenda.
Consent agenda tonight starts with the Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held November 4th, 2021. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 15 in the aggregate amount of $1,789,158.97. We have two purchase orders, IEP A project plan and loan assistance, $34,100, and this has to do with the preliminary engineering and for the water main improvements anticipated in Liberty Park. Next is Compass Minerals America Incorporated, $51,926.40. The total of the purchase orders, together with Finance Ordinance Number 15, is $1,875,185.37. There is one community event, Westmont Park District Winter Beer Fest Fee Waivers. Board to consider an ordinance approving the waivers of fees for the following. One, special event liquor license fee. Two, temporary use permit. Three, tent permit. And four, food truck permits. This is an annual event that is scheduled for the Saturday, February 19th, 2022, and that completes the consent agenda.
And just as a reminder, if nothing changes that goes on the consent agenda, if there's anything on a special event that has been altered or changed, it would be a new business item. So do you have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve. Little?
Second. Nero? Motion remains second. Any questions, comments? Seeing a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion carries. New business, Simmski Plaza designation. This is official tonight. The plaza has been named and dedicated in honor of the Simmski family. As everybody know, Jenny is the longest-serving elected, consecutive elected official as clerk over 24 or 25 years. Her brother-in-law was trustee for a couple terms, and mayor in '81 through '85, I believe. And the family was very instrumental in developing businesses downtown. Started to help start the Chamber, the old Bank of Westmont, which is now the Bank of America. He, Mr. Simmski, Steve Simmski, started that with a group of individuals. Dr. Lockhart was another one. And they owned the dime store downtown. I guess that Ben Franklin downtown. So they've been very, very instrumental in this community. And not only did they get one of our legacy award families, along with Addington, the Addington family, the Ron family, the Bellary family, the Guzzo Johannick family, not Guzzo, Johannick family. We honored, and then also the Park Board that served over 150 years, those four individuals. So we honored them, and also, we unveiled the Simmski Plaza, which is just west of here. It's a beautiful little plaza that a lot of people didn't know about. So officially tonight, I need a motion to approve the resolution designating the public plaza adjacent to Village Hall at 31 West Quincy as Simmski Plaza. Motion to approve. Barker?
Second. Little?
Motion remains second. Any comments? All I can say is, well deserved. I'd ask... I'll do the roll call. Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Neerl?
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Johanne Guzzo?
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations. That passed. I do have to say, we kept it a surprise, so.
Who certainly did.
They did a good job. So new business B, the LIH WAP vendor agreement. Board to consider ordinance adopting an agreement with Board to consider ordinance adopting an agreement with the DuPage County Department of Community Services to participate in a low-income houseware, household water assistance program. Assistant Village Manager, Parker.
So this is a general topic that the board has talked about at committee meetings ever since the pandemic started, and as you'll recall, the board was very understanding with residents and what they might be going through, and didn't want to be shutting up residents' water during a really difficult time at the beginning of the pandemic, so we put a hold on that. And then, right around the time we had started talking about maybe removing that hold and starting to, you know, force people to make their water payments or have their water shut off, there was an announcement about some federal funds that could be used to help people who were struggling to be able to make those kinds of payments. And so the Village Board, again, very generously decided to hold off on it until we found, you know, had a little bit more information about that program, so that we didn't put our residents in a very difficult situation. And so we then had some information from the state, and now some from the county. So our county's putting together a program for that assistance, to provide assistance to water customers and sewer customers who need some assistance to be able to make their water payments. So the program hasn't officially started yet, but we do have the form agreement out there, which was included in this, and this is kind of, it's sort of a take it or leave it agreement. The attorneys reviewed it and is good with it. There's a few things that, you know, we're all be kind of watching, there's a few things that the attorney said, you know, could be a little bit better, but if it's a form letter, it's good enough. And we're in a good shape with it, and think it's a good opportunity to take advantage of this for our residents. So we'll probably be looking to start moving more towards a shut offs, probably closer to spring, my guess with the programs.
Do you have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Additional comments?
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on miscellaneous, I do have to say this is short agenda, we had planning and zoning was moved to last night from previous week, or we would have several other items on this agenda, which we'll probably have the next meeting. I don't know if anything you need to add, John? No? Nobody else?
I'd like to.
Yes.
I'd like to just offer up, to everybody have a wonderful, safe, and happy and healthy Thanksgiving, and please stay safe from COVID over the holiday.
Yep, happy holidays to everyone. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. I'd ask for a roll call to adjourn, please.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
And again, thank everyone, this meeting is adjourned.